You good now?
Meeting will come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united cause, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is celebrating success.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I would like to recognize Mr. Chris Faulkner, who is here with us tonight. Chris, doing what I do, I get the great opportunity to work with the media department across POA. And Chris does the same thing. He's helped food and beverage out, he's helped out at Gear Garden. He just recently got transferred to, or transferred to Marketing and Communications. Doing an outstanding job there. Now, he's even helping me, while he's here doing this, give music out at Gear Garden. We're going to start playing out there. But Chris does it with a sense of humor. He's fun to work with, just does a fantastic job. So, thank you, Chris, for all you do.
All right, that's always fun. Next up is the approval of the minutes from the May 25th regular meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Jason?
Second.
Jeff, the second. Any additions, corrections? Does anybody find anything wrong with them? In that case, we'll go for a vote. All those in favor? Nine, zero. Next is the June 15th, recently, last week, work session. Do I have a motion for those? Jan? Second by Jerry. Anything to be changed there? Good job. All those in favor? Nine. Next up is the Joint Advisory Committee Reports. First on is Recreation. Debbie? Deborah?
Good evening. The Recreation Committee met on June the 12th. All amenities were reported to be in good condition with the following notes. Over at Metfield, it was recommended to recupuse the areas currently housing the shuffleboard courts. At Branchwood, there is a dead tree along the walking path with the concern being a large limb over the walkway. At Loch Lomond, water is pooling along the third baseball, third base line of the softball field. Over at Blowing Springs, the new events at the Gear Garden, Food Truck Friday, Family Saturday, and Jazz Sunday are incredibly well received by the community. Great job. At Tyree, and somehow that's slightly comical, someone ran over the "No Parking, No Loading" sign, and it is badly damaged. Lake Avalon Park and Beach, over 125 tons of white sand were brought in. That place looks beautiful. Ton of work went into that. Great job again. Reared in Complex Tennis, the carpeting on the mini golf course around hole 15 is starting to come up, and there's some damage to the buckets at the beginning of the course. At a tanyard, we had a report read to us that was written by Randy Hamm, who is the Trail Volunteer Leader. It outlined the amazing amount of work the volunteers have completed, their future plans, and the excellent working relationship and partnership they have with Rick Echols. Under the staff reports, Tom reminded us that it's now time to begin thinking about and budgeting for 2024, and our committee recommendations will be due by the end of August. Rick informed us that the Lake Windsor drawdown will now start two weeks earlier than originally announced. It will start on October 23rd, as the city requested this to address the Chelsea Culvert repair. He removed, or his team removed no wake buoys from the no wake lakes because it was just kind of eye clever. And the kids' fishing derby was extremely successful. There were at least 70 kids in attendance. From John, we heard that the gun range attendance in May was up 55% over last year. The cancer challenge had 120 trap shooters for the nighttime youth shoot. And classes now, though, are slowing a little, but that's due to the heat. And finally, from Joan, the kids' triathlon is scheduled for Saturday, June 29th at Lake Avalon. They're expecting between 70 and 90 kids. Swim team has kicked off with 127 swimmers. And this is probably one of our lesser-known, least-talked-about activities, but it's a pretty big deal. We have two swim meets out there. One takes place June 17th, and the next will be July 7th. Any questions, comments?
Where's the swimming now?
Over at Reared. Our next committee meeting is July 10th at 4:00 in the boardroom. Thank you all.
Thank you.
The Lakes Committee report. Lakes Committee voted to approve lowering Lake Windsor beginning on October 16th. It's actually going to be three weeks early. This is because Chelsea Road has a lot of extensive damage to it, that culvert. And this will allow the city of Bellevista to get in there early and to repair this. All the work has to be done before the asphalt plant, asphalt plants close for the winter. They don't want to be halfway through the work and then have to stop it for months. All lakes except Lake Brittany have been given nourishment, nourishment enhancement treatment during the week of June 5th. Additional treatment is still ongoing. Committee began discussing the 2024 budget recommendations. Final recommendations are due by August 31st. And that's the report for the Lakes Committee.
Thank you. For Golf Committee, Ruth Hatcher?
Okay, thank you. The golf meeting was Wednesday, June 14th. Teams for the maintenance. Verification was suspended June 22nd, 23rd, yesterday, or today and tomorrow. Verification at Brittany, the 23rd and 24th. The collar repairs, the contract is scheduled for July 10th. Brooksdale, Kingswood, Country Club Highlands will take repairs, will be six to eight days duration, two days per course. So we ask for your patience. Golf op has sent out the July schedule for the golf groups indicating these changes. Fairway sites is always an issue. Each course is different, being the grass, et cetera. Height of the grass is determined by the type of grass, how often the grass is mowed, and how many shotguns a course has, and the weather. So each and every course is treated differently. So when you play from one to the other, expect to see a little bit difference in height. Golf operations, Darryl Maltoons, May rounds report. May rounds ended 24,465, up 7,432 over last year. Year-to-date rounds are 66,848, up 17,494 over last year. The story for the year, May report, is simply another month of record-setting numbers. Great weather conditions impacted the rounds drastically for the month of June, or May, and pro shop sales are over budget by 121%. Range buckets at the end of May were 8,940, up 3,003 over last year. Range bucket year-to-date, 31,000, up 9,700 over last year. It's a lot of range buckets. Tournaments, Darryl took the tournament schedule for Alexander, Junior Campus Full. They had a great time. The kids, maybe 60 or so for July, they've still got a couple of openings if you'd like to be there. All-in-the-family registration is out there. July 23rd is the date. Fourth of July tournament, Friends of the Highlands, it's a Highlands registration is online. And the All Summers Tournament, registered, registration is online also, and that's this weekend, and we wish them well. Old business, the golfer charity challenge was held yesterday. Great success. And we thank all the volunteers, and five of your board members volunteered, and I think everybody had a good time. Bellevista Foundation is running a silent auction today, Friday and Saturday, here at the Bellevista Country Club. Committee thanked outgoing members Jeff Hendren, Sheila Hayward, and Mike Houston for their three years of dedication. Dave DeGraff was recommended to the POA Board to continue under for another three years in the golf committee. And Brad Lawrence, Kim Mullen, and Jim Estes' names will be recommended to the board tonight for your vote. 2024 budget will be discussed at the next meeting, which will be due at the end of August. And our next meeting is July 12th at 4 o'clock here in the boardroom. Any questions?
Thank you, Ruth. Exciting news. Next, the preliminary financial reports. I believe Beth has good news?
Very good news. I got it. Is this on? Yep. Oh, yeah. So this is the financial review for May, and as always, the financial reports in this presentation, and the detailed financials can be found on the website. So we'll start with the consolidated results for the month of May. Revenue consolidated is 3.3 million, with 270,000 over budget. Cost of goods sold is 84,000 worse than budget, as would be expected with the increased revenue. Operating expenses is 41,000 better than budget. So EBITDA for May is a positive 506,000, which is 228,000 better than budget. Looking at year-to-date, the revenue is almost 15 million year-to-date, with 702,000 over budget. Cost of goods sold is 336,000 worse than budget. Operating expenses are 460,000 better than budget. And EBITDA year-to-date is 1.9 million, with 826,000 over budget. So looking at the year-to-date, year-to-date EBITDA variances to budget by division, as Ruth kind of alluded to in her committee meeting, golf operations is doing really well. They have a 21% growth over last year in their greens fees and pro shop sales. Also, their labor is under budget so far. So they have 412,000 year-to-date better EBITDA than budget. General income is 176,000 better than budget due to primarily investment income and expense savings. Recreations, 131,000 better. That's expenses across the board is less than budget. And golf maintenance is 131,000 better than budget. And that is primarily all in labor. It's unfilled positions. But I talked to Keith, and he says those positions have pretty much been filled in the last 30 days, plus they've been having some overtime, so we probably won't see that next month. Food and beverage is 73,000 better than budget, and they are experiencing a 29% growth in income from last year. So that's primarily in income. So I'm going to go down to the bottom. Is water is the worst than budget on EBITDA of 282,000, and we'll talk about water a little bit later in this slide. So, looking for the month, revenue was 290,000 better than budget for POA only, without water. Food sales were better than budget, and golf fees, as I've mentioned, 195,000 for the month, better than budget. Boat registrations were better than budget by 14. Membership transfer fees are less than budget by 37,000, and discounts were worse than budget, which is to be expected with the increased revenue. And income on investments was better than budget by 26,000. So you'll see that the revenue for the month is better than budget and better than the same time last year. Expenses were 31,000 better than budget for the month. This is salaries and benefits were better than budget by 77,000. Again, unfilled positions, that's likely to swing. HR's doing a great job of filling those positions. Bad debt expense was better than budget by 31,000. Common property maintenance was worse than budget by 11,000, and that's tree removal on common property. Mike tells me that we had a dry season last year, and that's contributing to that. On top of additional improved property is causing us to have more trees observed as needing, needing cut down. Professional services were worse than budget by 33,000, and that's due to professional services related to the traffic of fire. And office equipment lease were worse than budget by 11,000. And we received in May a large usage, annual usage invoice that wasn't expected. They hit that and caused that. EBITDA was better than budget for the month of 281,000 for the POA. So looking at year-to-date?
Beth, does it make a comment about?
Yeah.
Common maintenance property? I've read and had several members comment.
It is.
I've heard several members and read several about how when they have an issue with trees on common property, that their response time has been outstanding when they call in. Like, I'm talking about sometimes same-day response to get that taken care of. So just, just kind of, I know there's more of it, but it seems like it's really been very proactive and reacted on very quickly.
Yeah. Great comment. I think Doug and Mike are, pair up on that and take care of that very well. So looking at year-to-date, the POA-only performance, you can see those categories that are better than budget year-to-date. A lot of the same ones that you'll see in a minute. Salaries and benefits, year-to-date is the biggest, 376,000. Worse-than-budget is 188,000 on COGS. Professional services and taxes, professional services I just talked about, taxes and permits. A lot of that is Tom's work with the, with the city. And credit card fees, that's increased income, increased usage. And the intercompany interest expense is worse than budget because the rates are higher. So here's the POA year-to-date expenses by category and how they match up with actual budget and prior year. You'll see nearly all of them are better than budget, except for professional services, as I mentioned, credit card fees and taxes and permits. And the salaries and employee benefits are there in the corner, showing better than budget. So golf is having an incredible year, so we thought we'd highlight that by course a little bit. You'll notice that all of the courses are beating budget and prior year. Kingsdale is beating budget by 129,000 year-to-date. Country Club, 148,000 year-to-date. Metfield, 67,000. Highlands, 58. Scottsdale, 5. Tanyard, 9. So every single course is doing well. Moving to water for the month of May. Sales were better than budget for the month by 19,000, but new service connections and Wabberdor capital buy-in fees were worse than budget. And expenses, cost of goods sold's worse than budget by 63,000. Salaries and benefits were better than budget by 10. Water distribution equipment was better than budget by 13. EBITDA was positive for water for May, but it was worse than budget by 53,000. And looking at the year-to-date, you'll see the categories there better than budget. Salaries and benefits, service contracts, credit card process charges, bank charges, bad debts, worse than budget. The meter installation supplies and the water distribution equipment, some of that is Charlie's, has front-loaded some of those supplies. And also, he's having to fix some leaks, and that's contributing to that, and the maintenance repairs as well. And inflation in costs. The electric utility is also 12,000 worse than budget. So looking at the year-to-date expenses by category for water, there are several that are at or slightly above budget. The worst of those are maintenance and repairs and supplies, which, for the same reasons I just talked about. Salaries and employee benefits were better than budget by 48,000.
Why do you think the credit card fees were so different? Does that have a change in the system?
When the sales are down, the credit card fees are, yeah. Yep. Cash, so between water and POA, total cash is 9.8 million in unreserved. Five million for the POA unreserved, almost 3 million in water unreserved. And then we do have a million reserved back for water, and 840,000 reserved back for the POA. There's the one-pager. It goes through a lot of what I just went through, so I'm not going to read through all those departmental variances to budgets. The total POA EBITDA without water is 1.1 million over budget, and, and water is 282,000 worse than budget. And we owe, the POA owes the water department 2.1 million. I think that's it. Any questions? Oh, you're welcome.
Sandy needs advisor.
Excuse me, the next item on the agenda is the open forum. Did we have anybody sign in? Nobody signed in. Did you want to speak? Approach the microphone, identify yourself, and the street you live on. Oh, yeah, there's, there's a block over here for three minutes.
Hi, my name is Barbara Bexer. I'm sorry, I didn't know I needed to sign in, or I would have. And I'll try to be brief. I live on the West Side. Grateful to be in Bellevista, love it. I think the maintenance in the city is outrageous. But I have a concern, and my neighbors do as well, so I kind of feel like I'm speaking for several of us. There is, or was, a Loch Lomond sign that said Stony Kirk Boat Ramp. And it directed people down to the boat ramp, and it's gone suddenly. And a lot of us neighbors have noticed it. Believe it or not, it's, it's a nice direction, and that's part of the beauty of the city. You guys have, the signage is so nice. And it kind of likens a national park, which makes it all more quaint and neat. So to have it gone, we were all surprised. And not only does it, doesn't guide people on where the boat ramp is anymore, it's also used actually as a landmark, kind of, of where to turn and, you know, where things are. And so there's a lot of us that are really disappointed. We called to ask what happened, and I didn't get an answer back. Somebody else said that they heard it was old, and so it was taken out, and it was going to cost $5,000 to get a new sign put in, which sounds kind of very expensive. And I see under maintenance and repairs that we're better than budget. So I'm just kind of wondering, with all due respect, like, what, how come it's not going back up? And then other neighbors have, have come up and said that ours isn't the only one that's gone. The Lake Avalon one's gone, they took it out, and it's not, they didn't put another one back. So I'm just kind of wondering what happened to it? And if it's going to be put back, and I hope it is.
Thank you.
So, actually, the information that you heard is accurate. So a lot of the old gray signs are decades old, and they're falling down on their own in many cases. And so we've been working with the city on trying to replace those. The challenge is, is that we have approximately 55 of the gray signs out there. And because of the city requirements on the size of signs and the fact that the signs have to have tear-away, tear-away bolts on them in case they were hit by a car, those signs, those little signs, we're estimating between $5,000 and $7,000 to replace them. And since we have 55 of them, 55 times 5 is a, is a big number. So we're trying to work with the city to see if we can come up with some sort of alternative. So as, as crazy as it sounds, yes, that's the issue. And so it's not just Stony Kirk, it's multiple other ones. Tyree, we had to remove, well, Tyree fell down on its own. So we have multiple locations, and you'd think, from a logical point of view, that you could go in, well, there was a sign there, just let's replace it with a similar inexpensive wood sign. No, we can't. The city will not allow us to do those. Those signs were installed before the city was founded, so it was under different rules. So I don't have a good answer for you right now, other than we're in a tough spot, and to replace all those signs at 5,000 times 55 signs is not a viable financial option.
No, and I, I would agree with you. However, it compels one to wonder where you're getting your bids from on contract for a $5,000 sign or repair.
We've gone to, we've gone to multiple, multiple locations, and as I indicated, the requirements that are placed upon us by the city are what drive up the cost.
Well, I, you know, I would hope that POA would represent us in that manner, and, you know, it'd be nice if there was some alternative. I'm sure if it was the Highlands pub...
Okay. I'm, sorry. We, we appreciate your concern and... We don't like it either.
Yeah, I'll stick up for it and say that I do think that it's time for us to put on our creative hat and try to find a solution that could possibly happen to where we could take existing signage, like the stop and street signs, and also put a secondary marker on them or something to kind of...
At least you could temporarily, until your situation...
Yeah, I think a creative, creative solution could be found.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. The next item, the budget calendar, we've talked about this. It's very similar to previous years, and as yet in the meeting, we haven't had any problems with the calendar. So I guess we go ahead and make a motion to approve it?
It's on page 68 of your board packet.
It's right after the financials. Jackie?
I made the motion approving the budget calendar for 2024.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by JB. Is there any concern? Do we have a problem or question with it?
I guess my only concern would be some of the numbers that we saw today in terms of like the common maintenance stuff. Was, is it really earmarked enough for what we see with now 600-plus new home permits every year, more encroachment from common property, getting into danger zone? There's some of the numbers that we see reflected here by mid-year, taking it... There's some of the numbers that we see reflected here by mid-year, taking into account for what we're budgeting for 2024. That'd be my only thing, I know that's a deeper exercise. I mean, I do, I didn't know we have variances and we can kind of make adjustments on the fly, but I would, I would hope we would have taken some of this recent data now that we're at this moment and inserted into that.
Right, by, by the time the numbers get before us, you know, we'll be much deeper into the year and we'll see how well the continue, the tendencies continue. They either will or they won't, and I'm sure that the guys doing the budget will take that into account.
And Dave, I think this calendar reflects a change that was made so that we could be more on top of and be more current with this schedule, so that we have better data, more current data, so we're not forecasting as much. So I think it's a, help with that a little bit, Mike.
Yeah. So, okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving that calendar? All approve. Next item is the proposed improvements for the Gear Garden.
This is on page seventy of your board packet. We went over this in more detail at the work session. I can go, I have the, still have the presentation up on the, on the computer if you want me to go through the whole thing, but it hasn't changed. What is occurring is we're doing very well at the Gear Garden and so as a result of that success, we're running out of kegs on a consistent basis. You're not allowed to move kegs from one location to another, it's against state law. And so we're trying to come up with a solution that would allow us to store more kegs on site. Also, we have several additional or the final concrete benches that are literally forty to fifty years old and are in horrible shape and need to be replaced. So we figured if we're going to do some concrete work to create a storage area, we might as well do concrete work to get rid of the remaining picnic benches and so forth, so.
Would you mind doing a Cliff Notes version? I think it'd be good for the membership, more people are in tune to the general session than the previous session.
You mean those benches aren't like Fenway seats? You know, and those are incredible. People don't want those, they could be a part of the silent auction over here. They kind of help, you know.
We can deliver them to your house. Oh, I picked the wrong presentation. How am I doing?
They help exfoliate you, you don't even realize it. They will, they will exfoliate you.
So here's a, a picture of the opening weekend. It was actually much busier, much busier than this for most of the day, at least when I got there. And here's how we're sitting right now, the first year. Now, keep in mind, we didn't open until July, the first year, but we brought in fifty-one thousand dollars in revenue. Second year, we brought in just under a hundred, and right now we're projected to do just under two hundred thousand. So we're doubling, 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 which is great. And we sold eight hundred Pioneer Cups in the first weekend alone. And that brings them coming back all over and over and over again, which is outstanding. Plus, we've been doing very well with regards to the merchandise. Leslie just does an outstanding job getting us merchandise to sell. So we're asking for additional storage for the kegs, merchandise and supplies. We're not going to go into that unit, you know, we're not going to use that as a sales location, it's just storage. We have a spoke, a location where we can kind of tuck it away and hide it, but also get to it quickly when we need additional product. Replacing the final benches, which are fifty-plus years old, so we'd get a ten-foot container and we would have refrigeration units inside the container. And we would add siding and trim work so that it would match the existing building. We would replace the benches and the concrete pads. On here, we had mentioned that we would have beer taps on the outside of it. We wouldn't, we are not going to have that. After all, the city did not want us to have that. It did not conform with one of their ordinances, so that was stricken. But we're looking, we're asking for thirty-two thousand dollars, which includes a ten percent contingency.
Can I have a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion approving the expenditure of thirty-two thousand dollars, which includes ten percent contingency for the improvements requested for the Gear Garden.
Thank you. A second? Jan Higgin? Okay, is there any discussion?
I just have, I just have one thing. I know we've talked about the food trucks that are coming and I keep thinking to myself, the Blowing Springs area is a great opportunity for some upgraded vending opportunities. I would urge our hospitality group to look into some higher-end vending machines, possibly ones that have heated and cooled items. It seems like there's a pretty good trapped population there, people that would consistently look to activate those vending machines and, and vending machines can also offer swag in them too. So we could have things that are not just perishable in there and still find a way to, for when the check-in station is closed and people still want to pick up merch, that vending machine could also dole us that. So I, I hope they can look into that.
Something to look into. Jeff?
Tom, I just had to understand, Craig, we're no longer going to be able to sell from that new storage container like we were hoping to or?
Yeah, so the original idea was the storage container, we would not sell from the interior, but we thought that a couple times a year when it's extremely busy, we would have taps on the outside and we can serve from those. Unfortunately, they're not, the city won't allow us to do that. So we can still have Bentonville Brewing come out with their, their truck, their van, and they can, they have taps on the outside, so we're just going to have to use that. It was an extra nicety, but the city said no.
Oh, I agree, we still need the brewery for the keg. I was just kind of disappointed that we can't get everything we wanted.
And is that, why is Bentonville Brewing allowed to do it? Because they have an off-site catering license? And what would prohibit us from applying for the same.
To move kegs, maybe?
Criteria that they have, so we could eliminate this third-party vendor who gets so much extra cheddar?
You know, honestly, I didn't, I didn't get into, they said no, and I just took no. I didn't actually ask for the logic behind it. I just was like, okay, that's not acceptable. So we might be able to revisit it. And that was just, that was a side nicety. The, the critical issue is having the kegs on-site in a cold storage. That's, that's, that's ninety-nine percent of the requests. The taps on the outside, it's really, really small.
I wonder if it was the taps on the outside or was it that location, since it's going to be off to the side? Is that area over there considered part of the Gear Garden or not?
It is, it's fenced in, it is part of the Gear Garden, that wasn't it. I can look into it and get back to you guys, but I, I honestly didn't ask the question. I, I accepted the word no.
Well, I think what, if I understood you, Mike, is it's the moving of the kegs where Bella, Bella Vista Brewery, almost there. Bentonville Brewery could move kegs and we couldn't, and it's, it's got to be, it has to do with the licensing that we have compared to what permits.
And this, this may be less Bella Vista and more ABC.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering.
Yep.
Yeah. Call for the vote. All those in favor of the proposal? Nine. Next item is the nomination of a volunteer to the election committee, namely Ann Dalkey.
This is on page seventy-one of your board packet.
Ann has done a lot of things for the POA over the years. I believe she was on the election committee at one point.
She was on the committee and she's volunteering out, she's been volunteering a lot of hours for the Golf for Charity event, so.
I move that we accept the nomination of Ann Dalkey to serve on the elections committee.
Thank you, Jeff.
Second.
JB, second. I have to ask, any objections? All those in favor?
Go Ann, go.
Go Ann. Great, Bella Vista's a great place for volunteers, we got so many. Next up is nominations for the golf committee. Ruth referred to that earlier. They have referred to us, the names of James Estes, Brad Lawrence, and Kymala Mullin. So one at a time, do we have a motion? Jackie?
Sure. I make a motion for nominating James Estes to the golf committee.
Thank you. A second on that? Jason? Okay, was there any questions about James candidacy? All those in favor? Thank you. Nine. Next up, who wants to do Brad Lawrence?
I'll do Brad.
Jason.
I make a motion affirming the nomination of Mr. Brad Lawrence to the golf committee.
Thank you. Jerry, second. Any questions about Brad? All those in favor? Thank you. Nine. Next up, Kymala Mullin?
I want to nominate, I make a motion affirming the nomination of Kymala Mullin to the golf committee.
Thank you. And Jeff seconds that one. Any questions about Kymala? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. Thank you very much. Nine. Okay. The returning member is Dave DeGraff, he's consented for another term, so can I have a motion for Dave?
Yeah, I'll make a motion affirming the nomination of Dave DeGraff to the golf committee.
Thank you. Sandy, second, staff? Any questions there? All those in favor? Thank you very much. Next up, we get to policies. Three oh nine, the dock and boathouse. This is something we've been working on with the city and the townhouse association, trying to get all three entities in agreement, and they have been cooperating very well. We have before us the final version for a second of two required readings.
Earlier this week on Monday, I attended the city council work session and we talked about the POA adopting policy three point zero nine, or at least the changes to that policy. And then the city confirming their decision to make a modification of one of their ordinances. And so appears that both, all were, all four entities, the city, the POA, ACC, and the townhouse association are all on the same page with regards to this. So we're going to be making this change, assuming the board votes in favor of it, and the city will make their change, and so it's really working, everybody working together.
It's amazing, everybody's working together, it's great. Okay, we have a, a motion for three point oh nine. Jan?
I make a motion to approve the suggested changes to policy three point zero nine, dock and boathouse. This is the second reading of two required readings.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Jerry. Have any questions popped up about this? No questions, we can move to the vote then. All in favor? It's now a policy. Can I have a motion for policy, a new policy, ten point zero two?
I move to approve the brand-new policy ten point oh two, definition of improved. This is the second reading of two required readings.
Thank you, Jeff. Sandy is second on that one. Any questions? Being a new policy.
I just have a general question about both of these. When will they be effective?
Tomorrow?
So it's, okay.
Second.
In a matter of seconds.
Should have thrown the key back to the office.
We don't have to do that state thing. All those in favor?
For the, sorry, real quick, for the membership and all, we do this every time we do these policies, but we have beaten these up and this, nothing has changed the first time I went to it, so that's why there's not a lot of discussion on these policies.
Yeah. Maybe we're getting better at it.
JB's.
All those in favor? That's nine zero. That brings us to the end of the agenda and brings us to the announcements portion. The Recreation JAC meeting, as Deborah said earlier, is at July tenth, four P M. here in the boardroom. The Lakes JAC meeting is Wednesday, the twelfth, at two P M., followed by the Golf JAC meeting at four P M. here in the boardroom. Rules and regulations will meet the next day, Thursday, the thirteenth, at one thirty P M. here in the boardroom. The Board of Directors GM meeting, which is a closed meeting, will be following that at two thirty P M. here in the boardroom. The next work session for July will be on the twentieth, at nine A M. here in the boardroom. And the regular session for the month of July will be on the twenty-seventh, at six P M. here in the boardroom. With that, we have reached the end of our agenda. Did anybody have anything else that they wanted to put forward? In that case, meeting will be adjourned. Thank you very much.